Okay, let's call this order. This is our Monday, September the 8th of 25 at 5:00 PM. We're County Commission regular meeting. Uh, we've had a, I mean, we done done a pledge of allegiance and agenda. I hear a motion that we approve the agenda.
Sue move.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any discussion? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas? Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes, uh, okay. Now, I need approval of the minutes.
Chairman, I'll most that we approved the August 11th, 2025 work session minutes, public hearing, the regular meeting, and August 28th, 2025 call meeting.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas? Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes, uh, okay. We have a proclamation, a childhood cancer awareness month, and, uh, come on up, Chief.
Designation of September is childhood cancer awareness month, whereas a gold ribbon represents childhood cancer, and whereas there are 12 major childhood cancers with leukemia and brain central nervous system being the most common, and whereas one in 285 children will be diagnosed with a form of childhood cancer before the age of 20, with the average age of diagnosis being six years of age, and whereas 43 children are diagnosed with cancer every day in the U.S., and 9,550 children will be newly diagnosed in 2025, and whereas one in five children diagnosed with cancer will not survive, with the average age of death being eight years of age, and whereas children, childhood, whereas childhood cancer kills more children than pediatric age, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, asthma, and muscular dystrophy combined. Now therefore be it resolved, the Ware County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 2025 as childhood cancer awareness month in Ware County, Georgia, and recognizes the courage of the children and their families who have battled or are currently battling cancer, as well as the organizations that provide support. So proclaim on this eighth day of September 2025.
Okay.
With Ware County Fire Rescue and Ware County EMS, we are wearing gold shirts during the month of September, and I would like for EMS and the fire department to come up and stand behind you guys, uh, to get a picture showing the support of childhood cancer.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have to get, we'd love to get there.
Get close again?
Yeah.
And now right here. Thank you.
One more, one more.
Okay, we have one more, the ovarian cancer awareness month. Oh, who don't come read it?
I'll do that.
Cancer don't read it, okay?
Thank you. Designation of September as ovarian cancer awareness month, whereas a teal ribbon represents ovarian cancer, and whereas ovarian cancer is the 11th most common cancer among women, the fifth leading cause of cancer-related death among women in the United States, and is the deadliest of gynecologic cancers, and whereas in the United States approximately one out of 91 women, or 1.1%, will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer at some point in their lifetime, and whereas there does not exist a single effective diagnostic tool for screening and early detection, making a surgical biopsy the only accurate diagnosis, and whereas in 2025 approximately 20,980 cases of ovarian cancer will be newly diagnosed, and 12,730 individuals will die from the disease nationwide, including 620 new cases and 429 deaths in Georgia, and whereas the five-year survival rate for ovarian cancer is, cancer is 51.6% and survival rates vary greatly depending on the stage of diagnosis. Now therefore be it resolved, the Ware County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 2025 as ovarian cancer awareness month on this eighth day of September.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, we got a, a dedication. Mr. Lee, he has worked hard.
We need to move that to the end. I don't think he's either.
He's not yet?
He's on his way.
Okay, we'll go, we just, we'll just move it to the end of the meeting then?
That'll be fine.
He, he's waiting on his wife, but he's headed this away.
Okay, all right, all right, we're gonna go on then. The agenda items. Approve the, approved title search and appraisal and purchase of right-of-way for North McDonald Road. Okay, we had that in the work session now. Everybody knows what that, we're gonna give the approval of it. I hear a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I got a motion.
I'll second.
You have a second. Any discussion on it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make it clear that this is to give the county manager the approval to do the title searches appraisal and to purchase it based on that appraisal amount. Anything over that needs to come back to the commission.
Right. Okay. Now, this next one is, uh...
We need to vote.
Well, we, we need to vote on it. Let's see. Okay, let me ask you one more thing about that. Now, you said you're gonna do all the appraisals with DOT approved appraisal.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On, on the road. Is that gonna cover Albany Avenue too now?
We already, we already, uh...
Can all of this, huh?
We, we've already approved Albany Avenue in the past, so, um, that, the, uh, county attorney office has that, and they're moving forward with it now.
Okay. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas? Mr. Cox?
Aye.
And chair votes, aye. Okay, now this is B, ESG industrial water loop.
Mr. Chairman and I make a motion that we approve the industrial park water loop and, uh, idea in principle subject to the revised plans being submitted and a, and an MOU executed between the appropriate parties.
Okay.
I second.
You got a second. Any, any discussion on it?
Yes, uh, I would hope that we could pretty much iron out some of this stuff before we, you know, rather vote on it. Uh, like I said, I agree with the concept and principles, and I know what they're trying to do, but I think we need to really move cautiously on this before we, uh, commit to it and, uh, make sure that, you know, everything is like to our liking and what we think is gonna be in the best interest of the county, and we also wanna try to, like I say, help the city with the issue they're having, and, uh, so I would hope that we could table it until we could maybe meet with all the parties, you know, and go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
From, from my understanding, of course, this has been a, a project that's been going on for several years, uh, even whenever I was on the commission between, uh, 2015 and 2018, it was, it was a part of discussion about connecting the, uh, the industrial park systems, and, uh, so all, all they're asking to do is put some pipe in the ground on some of our right-of-way, and so I think by us approving it, uh, we'll be helping out, uh, the, the citizens that we represent in the, in the city that are also part of the county as well, and so, um, I, I think it's just a good thing for us to go ahead and do. The, the, the parties have gotten together as far as, uh, ESG engineered who represents the city and, uh, Satella Regional who owns the water system, uh, that's, that it's gonna be kinda coming close to, so I believe the parties have been, uh, have come together and discussed everything, and, and really all they're asking us to do is just approve, giving them permission to dig in our dirt.
Yeah. I, I think, Mr. Burris, I understand your concern on that, but, uh, it's actually, what they wanna do is tie their system together, like John said. Yeah. And, and they just wanna go down our right-of-way, and, and I know we had a lot of comments on that thing before about that, but...
Yeah, and I, I agree. I, I understand the concept and everything, and, uh, but the thing as far as on the right-of-way, it's two different routes that they could take, and I don't know which one they're gonna use, you know, whether they're gonna go with the proposed route or going with their alternate route, and...
Yeah.
I just would like to know, you know, what they're gonna do, because either way they go, they're gonna, it's gonna impact, but it could be less impact on one versus the other, you know, but as far as the concept and trying to tie in with the, uh, industrial park, taking, I understand that, and I, I support all that, but I just, just like to know what, what, what we getting into right here as far as the routes.
Right. Is that what, on the, you know, on the MOU, that's what we asked for, ain't it, is to revise the plan?
I, I believe the revisions that we were asking for was, um, I believe they had had on the original plans, they were gonna be cutting the roads.
Right.
These were so that would they, um, specify they're not gonna be cutting our roads. Isn't that right, James?
Yes, sir.
And so, um, but also the understanding would be that, you know, they would specify which route they're gonna be taking.
Right.
As far as that goes, sue.
Before we vote on it?
That's all I have.
We got, we got a motion, and did I get a second?
I second.
I got, you got a second. Okay. Now, you, any more discussion, Mr. Burris?
No, I don't have it.
Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas? Mr. Cox?
Aye.
And chair vote, aye. Okay. Okay, alcohol license request for the 1900 block of Brunswick Highway. I hear a motion there.
Chairman, I make a motion, uh, for discussion on this on the alcohol request for 1900 Brunswick Highway. I don't understand that they, there no disqualifies, you said?
Correct.
Like what, disqualifies on it, last night?
Right, wasn't in the disqualifies.
Okay, all right, I got a motion. I got a second.
The motion was to approve it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve the alcohol license. Okay. Any discussion on it?
No.
All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas? Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Okay. Now, surplus request for EMA generator. Do...
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we, uh, approve the request to surplus the EMA generator.
Okay.
I'll second.
You got a motion and a second to surplus the generator. Then any discussion on it?
Uh, just wanted to make it clear that this is a, um, a military generator that the, uh, EMA acquired some time back, and, uh, it is no longer functional, so we're gonna be surplusing it so someone else can get it and, um, maybe use it for parts, uh, for their generators.
Okay. Any more? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas? Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Okay. Have any manager comment? Listen. Okay, ready yet?
Mr. Darvin out there? Do y'all know? He, he told me that. He was hoping he could be here by at least 5:30, he said, so...
Okay. We can let Mr. Joe take his place.
Well, yeah. Have you heard from Jonathan? Okay.
Okay. We have any commission comment?
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've mentioned this before, and I mean, I just like to kinda reiterate it every once in a while, but, um, downtown, uh, near the, uh, I think it's the War Memorial Park at the base of the Water Tower, right across the street from there, there's a, uh, a food ministry that's, uh, it's been there for several years, uh, it's called DC Downtown, and, uh, it's kinda like a grocery store. It's not, it's not cooked food, it's, uh, perishable and non-perishable items, but it's open on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and, uh, anybody can go up there, but the families at that place, uh, provide the groceries for them, you know, you can either make a donation, or you don't have to have any money, you can go in there and get you some groceries, and, um, I've, I've gotten groceries from there before, I volunteered there before, and so it's just a great thing for our community. Um, food is one of the resources that, uh, that we lack in this community a lot of times, and, uh, whether they're elderly, whether they're, um, disabled, or just, you know, all, just, you know, just, just can't afford to buy a lot of groceries, um, you know. I remember one time we had some, uh, college students come in, they were basketball players out there at the college, and if those of y'all who, who, who've gone through college, you know, sometimes you just don't have enough money to buy your own groceries, so, uh, they, they came in and, and we, we sent them back to their dorm with, uh, with some food, with some Gatorades, with some, um, sports mix and things like that, uh, I think it was some, uh, protein shakes that we had that we were able to send them back. We had, nobody really wanted a protein shake, so we filled up their trunks with it.
So, uh, that.
Uh, but anyways, but they, they, they serve the community. They serve Ware County, and they serve the eight counties that connect to Ware County, and, um, and they'll send, they'll send food everywhere. They've sent it to Jessup, to, to, uh, to a food ministry over there, and it's just a, a really good, um, really, really good ministry they've got out there. Um, lady named Nikki Spivey is the director of it, and, uh, those of y'all who, who maybe know, know Nikki might know who her husband was, James Spivey, he was the, um, he was EMS director over in Pierce County, recently passed away, and so she still serves diligently, and she wholeheartedly, and she, she volunteers the whole time, and so, uh, she's been doing that, I think, for about five years now. So, uh, anyways, if you get an opportunity, go down there, take a look at it, um, it's, it's, it's very unique, and it's, uh, it's just so worthwhile for our community to see people come together.
Good. Thank you, Jim. I'd like to, manager, on some of the roads, the county roads, I get a lot of calls about our maintenance on our dirt roads, and, uh, we, I know that the new man didn't have anything to do with this narrowing these roads up, but we're always pulling the inside slopes on these dirt roads, and we got a lot of our county roads so narrow, you can hardly meet nobody on them.
Yes, sir.
And the ditches, you can look and see they're, they're so far out where the old ditches were. Uh, this problem needs to be addressed to, uh, yeah, we need to think about that a little bit, see what we can do, and, and, uh, talk to our public works director, and see what we can come up with to put these roads back to their normal width.
Right.
But we got some of them so narrow, I know they people tell me you can't pass two cars.
Yeah, and I've, I've spoken with, with our public works director, um, just last week or something, recently, after you spoke, uh, mentioned that to me, and we're supposed to start doing that pulling dirt, um, off the back of the ditch instead of the front.
I know he didn't do that. He, he inherited it like that.
Right.
I mean, and, and I realize that.
Yeah.
But we need to come up with something to improve these roads, something.
Yeah.
Whatever we, we got to do to widen them, that's what we got to do. And whatever we, we got to do to widen them, that's what we gotta do. We, we need to go back. Those, probably some of them bad.
Right, and they're, they're gonna start trying to do some of that off the back of the ditch instead of the front, I believe.
Okay.
And that Larry's still here, he can come up.
Larry's still here, yeah. Uh, Larry, I know you didn't do this, you inherited it, but it need, these roads need widening, straightening up, these, these dirt roads. And it, it is a lot of maintenance to be done on them.
The, uh, thing about rolling that stuff out there right now is we can roll it out there, widen them roads, and when the grader over and get them roots and all up there in the roads, before the grader gets out of sight, people call them about roots in the road. Takes time to cut that stuff up and get it out of there.
Well, I think you can probably throw that down in the bottom of that ditch that's already there.
And cover it up.
And move it back, cause the road needs widening. I see some of them's in three, four foot from where they originally used to be. I got some pictures of them.
Well, all of these roads, all the dirt roads that I drove when I was young, a lot of them you couldn't, these two fifties they got now
Come here, look at this.
Right side, you couldn't ride that.
Look at that, man. Griffin Road.
No, they, they paving that, man.
No, no, that, uh, good and big. They got one mile. You don't know, one mile, so you don't ride down it like you ought to. Go down and check it out.
No, it takes time.
They just moved the roads in, narrow. We got, we got a lot of maintenance on these county dirt roads that they, they looked into a little more of what we've been doing.
We got a thirty foot route, man. Most of your road isn't a thirty foot route.
Yeah, we got a fifteen foot road bit.
I'll look. Which one you want me to start on?
Start on, first one you get to in the morning.
Start on.
Yeah. Start. Yeah.
Yep, they, they are, they are trying to get them a little wider, but you know, it's, it's, it's just hard and it takes so much time. And then you get behind on your route. And most people, they want the wide roads, I understand that. But at the end of the day, they want that thing greater where they run a seven mile an hour down.
Well, it need to be.
And it takes time to widen that thing out. And so they don't get their routes done.
I wanna ask you something else about now. Why is the graders parked for two, three weeks at a time when one's off on vacation? You just parked the grader?
The one you talking about is Earl that a day and his momma down.
Yeah, but I seen them parked before, way back. I run all around, I see them graders parked and they tell me the man's off vacation. I'm not saying anything about this, but what we need to do is hire some more operators. And when a grader, when a man vacations, we should have a man to replace him. We should have a man replace him. Well, that's your job. Hire him.
Give me the positions and I'll hire them.
You got it. We never told you not to. But you need to have enough of men that you can, when you, one's out, he needs to you need to, you need to have that grader running.
I agree with you. There used to be forty something people working out there at Public Works. I got twenty-one, Kansas, two secretaries.
Can't you hire some?
Well, I only have physicians, payroll physicians for the twenty-two, twenty-three that I have. For me to hire any more people, you as a commissioner and commissioners has gotta come with, with some money. So I can order, pay these people that you're talking about, so you want me to hire them.
Have y'all forty, y'all done cut all the physicians out?
Those here, we, 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 um, we added two this, this budget year at the beginning, uh, beginning of budget in July. And then, you know, the, the, um, agreement or the kinda the policy that I've kinda set it on, on people and staff and raises is, is that we would, um, you know, you, you put your, you, you put the people that you request in your budget in July. And then we'll look in January at halfway point if we can add some more people or, or whatever we raise or, or give staff raises, then we'll present it back before the commission man. Um, you know, we, the commission approved two more people in his budget and we, and that's what we filled, was two, 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 uh, two more people. So, now if the commission decides and they say if the commission says put two more, we'll, I mean, we'll go to Beverly, we'll see where we find some money, we'll put two more in. That's up to
Can't we hire some young people that right out of school, high school boys?
If they under forty years old, if they can't, if they can't do it with their cell phone, they ain't getting out there.
If you're gonna replace those
Well, you need to fire them.
Fill those two positions.
Yeah, I gotta fill those too. I've got them on site, I'm holding them.
You don't ever watch Trump, he fires them. Them won't work. Fire them, hire somebody will.
There's a good bunch, they work as hard at their job as anybody else does, but they ain't with so many hours in a day. And so much you can do with, with a limited amount of manpower that you have. And we, we're doing a pretty good job for normal manpower that we have in county size, we're counting five hundred and seventy something miles of dirt roads that we're grading. And try to turn them over about every three to four weeks at the most. And, you know, so that's, you know, that's, that's where the bulk of our time goes is grading the road.
Somebody ain't getting done like it would. That's all I'd say.
Anybody, that's, that's your opinion and I appreciate your opinion.
Maintenance is the main thing on these roads, maintaining the roads. That's, that's what the whole thing's about. Is maintaining the road where people can drive up and down them. You good at that? They serve these roads up in there and you can't hardly drive, man. Yes, I saw, one told me the other day, he said, this is bad behind the graders just in front of it. I just have the people that tell you that out there on the streets. I've heard that a lot of times. They did this bad behind the grader just in front of it.
Might as well when I grade it, don't worry.
Okay.
The remains, I'll, I'll go out there and take care of it.
Well, you start on the Griffin Road, that's when I live on, it stays bad. So, no matter which one you get on.
We, we had five head out there the other day working on Griffin Road.
Yeah. I can't see a whole lot.
Mr. Chairman, can we move on to, um, proof?
I think our honoree has arrived.
The honoree has came?
Is he here yet?
He is.
He's in the building.
You got the man here, okay.
He's here.
Be, I'm gonna let you, uh,
All right.
Introduce him.
This is, uh, for Mr. Darwin Lee and, uh, he has been inducted into the Georgia, uh, Country Music Hall of Fame. And I'm gonna ask Jonathan to come up and, and do the honor of working, uh, talking about. A man of the hour.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is, uh, an honor today that we, uh, honor Mr. Darwin Lee, uh, member of the Bigley community, Dole and Warrick County, for his accomplishments and to the Georgia Country Music Hall of Fame. A little bit about Mr. Lee, he came from a musical family. His momma sang fifty years in the choir at Liberty Baptist Church in Bigley, Georgia. Uh, where he grew, where he lived, he grew up on the farm. His brothers, uh, sang gospel in Country Music and younger brother played saxophone. Uh, his farmer daddy played guitar and his sister, uh, is a accomplished piano player. Uh, Mr. Lee played several instruments, but primarily wanted the piano. Uh, when he was thirteen years old, he took piano lessons from his William, uh, Mr. William Denton, a lady that was in the community. And after six months, he quit taking lessons and started playing by ear. Also learned to play guitar from a fellow named David Sweat, who worked in the fire tower at Bigley. He would climb the tower to join him and play guitar. During his high school, Darwin played in the band that would often go to Athens and play for the UGA fraternities. After high school in the sixties and early seventies, while working for Georgia Power, uh, his band, Southern Keys, played in local clubs. He played all over local places, including Douglas, Georgia F, uh, VFW every Saturday night for five years. He also opened shows for Freddie Hart, Bobby Bear, Mel Tillis, Dolly Hardin and Mr. Porter Wagner. Ultimately moving to South Carolina where he worked in a recording studio and recorded his first single. While in South Carolina, he worked a show in Orangeburg with Freddie Hart, who had a number one hit song at the time called Easy Love. Uh, he then met Freddie in Nashville and he took, and took Darwin to Capitol Records to meet his president, Mr. Earl Ball. Mr. Ball told him he was in the process of letting nineteen people on the roster go due to finances. But he asked Mr. Lee to come back in six months. Uh, he told me that he could make a number one country singer, but I never returned. Uh, instead, he took a booking agency, uh, and worked on the road out of Nashville and later met and went on tour with Jimmy Jesse McReynolds. Uh, bluegrass music duo, a brother from Nashville and a member of Grand Old Opry. Uh, Darwin left Nashville in the seventies, returned home to the roots where he put together a gospel group called The Waymakers. And from the, throughout the early eighties, he sang all over South Georgia, North Florida and has, uh, made several CDs in Nashville, uh, filed to be total, uh, in his musical career. And so he expressed that he's a proud, uh, member of Wexel, Austin Worth County or a citizen. And he's honored to be inducted into the Georgia Country Music Hall of Fame. And so this is a certificate that was presented to Mr. Lee, stating that Mr. Lee has been placed on the highest honor of a Hall of Fame and recognition of outstanding contribution and distinguished achievement in the country western gospel, blue, bluegrass music industry. And by recommendations of the committee on rewards have been granted this certificate. This was on October the thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-one. It's my pleasure to introduce to you, Mr. Darwin Lee. And Kansas would like to also honor him by placing a roadside marker in the Bigley community in honor of his achievements.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Can we get a picture of him?
Yeah, we'll get a picture.
Oh, yeah, behind it?
Yeah.
I think Darwin wants to say so.
Okay, good. Come on up, Darwin.
Turn around this way.
I just wanna thank our commissioner, you know, as part of this. And, uh, I know that, uh, John, what did John have?
He, yeah.
Anyway, he, John, he, I think John kinda kicked this thing off. And, uh, anyway, him and Elmer and, uh, then, uh, Bear got involved with it and, uh, kinda finished it up, I guess, but, uh, I just wanna thank y'all all.
Yes, sir.
But that y'all be done, thank everybody and, uh, I appreciate it, God in my heart.
They're gonna be placed in the Bigley community.
Yeah, just pick it up.
And, uh, but anyway, we put it around the, the Bigley community, we'll see them sign it.
Move it to the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, put it right here. Let them come up here. Y'all come out here, we, we just be in the background.
Can you push your foot down a little bit?
Sit down a little bit. I came on Mr. Burst. Right. We still need to get Burst in there.
And we need to send his picture up.
All right, on your mark, set, smile.
All right.
Okay, now right here, please. One, two, three, smile big. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get one of his wife, if y'all would. Mr. Darwin, you know that song Waiting on a Woman? You been making me sweat while I go. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all, let's do another picture.
Need another one.
Now let me get one. Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you move down just a little bit? I can't see you.
Yeah, come on back down this way.
Mr. Chairman, get between these two gentlemen off. Down, let's see if we can see everybody. One, two, three, big smile. Thank you very much.
One more? One more. How you doing?
Yeah, I'm on the way.
Congratulations.
I ain't adjourned yet. Okay.
Wait, John?
All right. Any more comments? See you. Be?
Yeah, I, the, the reason I was asking if he knew that song Waiting on a Woman, he told me the other day, he says, uh, she, she probably can't be there at five. He said, you know, cause she works. And, and I said, well, we won't do it without her. But I was beginning to sweat while I go for it. Yeah. Yeah, that's good. We, we, we weren't gonna do it without you.
Okay. Any more comment? If not, I hear a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Beating adjourn.